As everybody knows why we're here, this is for the new zoning amendments. The planning board is here. Three of you are here. Four of you are here. Yeah, okay. So I'm gonna turn it over to Jerry. Jerry is the chairman of the planning board and he'll go over the changes and the amendments and you'll be able to ask questions later.
Okay. What we're gonna do first is the amendments to the map. And I'd like to start out with a brief explanation of why we had to do some of the amendments to the map. We were asked by the county mapping department to certify that the map was correct. And when we looked at it, we found that we had a lot of properties that were in two zones, actually being subdivided by the river corridor. And another thing that drove us to revise the map was we were told by council that the subdivision lines, the lines for the zoning lines, should be definable on the ground either by roads, streams, property lines, something tangible. The river corridor line, which had divided some of these properties, is just a line drawn on a map. There's no points that you can go to and say, "This is in the corridor, that's out of the corridor." It's just a line on a map. So what we did was we looked at the -- most of the problems were along the river corridor and that's where the changes were made. We looked at properties that were in both zones and decided, you know, based upon their topography and what physical features were there, whether we could put them in one zone or the other. Even though they may be out of the river corridor zone, they're still in a river overlay zone. And all the restrictions that go along with the Delaware River Corridor are still in effect. I don't know whether you understand that or not. Maybe I can give you a little example here on this map. This red line here, all the way down through here, is the upper Delaware River Corridor as it goes down through. These properties here, you see, this is 97 that's going up through here and -- or this is 97, excuse me. This is the Hinkins Road. These properties, this property, this yellow strip, and all of this is one property, but as you can see, it's in two different zones. So what we did was we took everything south of 97, put that in the river corridor zone. That doesn't mean that the rest of it that's in the RU zone now isn't subject to the restrictions of the river management plan and the land use guidelines. We also had some problems with overlapping properties in a couple of other areas, some in Canusa Lake and some in Colertown. And those were caused by the sewer district line. When it was drawn, it went through, it cut some properties in half, making some of them in R1 zone, some of them in RU zone. So we had to decide which zone to put them in. Most of them wound up in full R1 zone. Now, there was a list of properties, section plot and lot numbers, published in the paper and the zone that they're currently in, that we're moving them to. If any of you saw them, you want to have questions about it, when we get to the question and answer period, I'll be glad to go and answer your specific questions. The other section that we're going to do is the actual changes we made to the zoning law, several different changes. Tom is going to go down through that and explain those changes one by one. We'd ask that if you have questions, first I'm gonna take questions on the map changes. And I'm gonna limit you to, you know, no more than five minutes apiece. If you -- you won't get to speak twice unless everybody else who wanted to speak has already spoken, okay? So it's gonna be one shot apiece. And then we'll do the same thing with the zoning changes. You know, if you have questions, we'll try to answer them if they're not clear. Otherwise, we want to hear your comments. That's what this is about. A public hearing is to gather your input. I mean, if you like it, you like it. If you don't, you don't. Tell us why. And we may not, we're not gonna sit here and argue with you. We want to hear what you have to say. If enough of it that's said, you know, is something that we think needs to be given attention, we'll maybe recommend that we give it attention. So that's the way we're gonna work it. So I'll start with the map. Anybody have questions on the map?
Yeah, I have a question about the map. I thought that this was gonna go in a little bit different sequence, like a typical public hearing. So first of all, I have a question about process. This is not like public comment period at a town board meeting where a resolution has been discussed or something like that. And, you know, people just give comments afterwards. As I understand, we have specific questions, some which have been addressed to the planning board and which, to my understanding, haven't been answered yet. And my question, one of my questions is, are you gonna be taking down, and you have the video, you can get all of these questions perfectly exact, and then aggregate the questions and then come up with some kind of a written or formal response to the different variety of questions that may be asked tonight? Or is it just, you're gonna listen to us and then, you know, as so many times in the past, that's it?
Well, a public hearing is not to argue about things. It's to take your input on things and we'll take that input and digest it. And if we think changes need to be made, we'll make them. Whether we're going to answer your questions, I don't know. You may not be satisfied with the explanation when Tom explains the things. Just give us a chance. I mean, you're already starting to be confrontational and haven't started yet.
I'm sorry if it's coming off confrontational. But my point is that, you know, questions that are asked, you know, are you not gonna take them down, perhaps aggregate them into categories and then formally respond to them? Because for the last several months, some people have been asking questions and there haven't been any, you know, responses to it. That's all, you know, the DEC or other agencies.
Maybe you'll get your response in the explanation. You're not even giving us a chance to make the presentation.
Okay. But my question is about process. I do have some questions about the map.
Okay. What's your question about the map? You've already had your five minutes.
Who is it? Who is it, Jerry?
Okay.
No, what's your question?
All right. It's a combination question about the maps and the text of the zoning ordinance, the proposed zoning ordinance. I see a couple of spots there. You've said that the intent, the thing that has triggered all of these zoning changes has been basically an administrative one. That's what I've gotten from attending several of the meetings, that where there's overlapping zones in a parcel, that for that reason, and I believe the assessors need that, that you wanted to change zones from, you know, multiple zones to single zones. If you looked on that map, down the lower left corner by the Delaware River Corridor, if we had the existing zoning map side by side with that, that whole area --
They're all right here.
Yeah. That whole area primarily would be in yellow. It would be part of the river corridor. And I know that about a year ago, for some reason, the hospital land --
That's exactly right.
And I'd like an explanation of the entire thing.
The hospital, okay, let me explain that.
Well, if you allow me to finish with my question, then you can provide an explanation. What I noticed and what I had heard was that the hospital had to be rezoned for some reason for a new project and that there was some urgency about that. And so that the town board and the planning board, I guess, decided to rezone that. But if you'll notice, there are five or six adjacent parcels now that were in the river district before. And now they've been taken out of the river district, put in a less restrictive district. And I understand that the overlay still applies there, but, you know, there's no, from what I can see, you've taken, instead of changing the zoning to the more restrictive one, which those properties were primarily in, you have in effect rezoned five or six parcels and made them all less restrictive. So can you explain that?
I can.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Let's deal with the hospital issue first. The hospital, approximately two years ago, the hospital had an opportunity to put an addition on the hospital through a grant. They had something like 90 days in which to get approval from the town to do this. The zone in the DR, the hospital was in the DR zone. In that zone, it wasn't permitted for them to add on to the hospital. The zoning didn't permit it. The town board, not the planning board, took it upon themselves to change the zoning as fast as they could. They did, I believe you held a public hearing on it, didn't you? Yes. And they held a public hearing, they did the seeker and everything, and they made the change. The only thing they didn't do, which they maybe should have done, was get the approval of the UDC. Okay? As for the rest of these properties here, that river corridor line intersected every one of those properties that we changed. In other words, they were either, they were partially in one zone or the other. Because the hospital, which is the big piece here, and the gravel bank, which is the other big piece, fit better in the RU zone. And because they were already split, they needed to be put in one or the other, we chose the RU zone. But you still have the same protection there that you had before because they're in the overlay zone. Okay? So nothing has been lessened. There's no zoning there where they could not do anything. This whole, all of this change was approved by the Upper Delaware Council. In fact, I got the final thing on it today and I think, what's his name, Travis is here to verify that. Okay? Any other questions? I'm gonna let Tom go through the zoning changes.
Okay. The zoning changes are, some of them fall into what I would call the technical cleanup category, others are more significant. We'll go through them. First of all, we added a definition of building inspector, simply because that's a common term that's used for that officer. And we made clear that that's interchangeable with code enforcement officer and zoning officer. We also revised the schedule of district regulations, which is where all the district uses and development standards are listed. We, for example, deleted sawmills from special uses in the Cal B1 and DR districts. We deleted crematoriums from the list of special uses in the B1 and Cal B1. We moved insurance offices, print shops, professional offices, real estate offices from special use to the principal permitted use category in the RU. We added language that said that must conform with the provisions of the Upper Delaware Scenic and Recreational River if located within this area, to accomplish what Jerry just talked about. We also added multifamily dwellings and projects to the list that's permitted special uses in the RU district, because we have some of that in the RU district. Added a note to the RU district, again reinforcing what Jerry talked about with regard to the Upper Delaware standards. And we added also in a sentence, added to the RU, Cal B1 and DR district statements of intent. So several different places we addressed that. We also added hospitals to the list of principal permitted uses in the RU district, which is consistent with what Jerry talked about for the mapping. Cleaned up the swimming pool section to make it conform with the building code. We added a noise, well, didn't add it, there's an existing noise section, and we revised that to try to introduce a little bit more simplicity and ease of understanding. The point of that is to, actually, we have a letter from a township engineer, town engineer tonight, that points out it's a stricter standard than we now have because we're talking about five decibels above the ambient noise level. So it's a more strict standard. And basically, I'll just explain very quickly. The idea is not so much the absolute decimal level that's important, but it's how much difference it is between what the existing or the ambient, or what you might call in common parlance, background noise is. The difference between that and whatever is being added to that that affects you. If you're up to five decibels, and there's some DEC documents on this, it tends to be noticeable but not objectionable or bothersome. You get between five and 10 above the ambient, regardless of what that ambient might be, whether it's low or high, you're going to have people notice it and complain about it, be annoyed about it, and so on. So we've tried to introduce that, make it more simple, easier to enforce, and stricter in that sense with a more rational standard. We've also revised the Section 613 introduction to make it clear that we have some special performance standards that apply to all uses. And again, another, one more instance where we've referenced the Upper Delaware standards to reinforce that. We've put in here some other conditions for special uses, which once again gets at that whole thing and talks about the fact that we can impose special conditions within that area to ensure that the provisions of the river management plan are upheld. We revised the, we're proposing to revise, the communications standards so that for new structures, an antenna site with an antenna that is either mounted or shut, that is either not mounted on the existing structure or is more than 10 foot higher than the structure and which is mounted should require special use approval. Kind of a technical thing. We added a whole new section on renewable energy systems, which we've actually been at for some time. We did this actually, what, three years ago, I think, or something like that. We're finally getting around to incorporating it into a zoning amendment. And so what it does is essentially two things. What it's, it sets some threshold standards for solar systems, geothermal, and wind systems. But more importantly than that, it basically guarantees that you can do those things. That's the whole point. It's intended to facilitate the use of those systems by homeowners and individual property owners and to ensure they have the ability to do that. So there are various, there are standards, but the overall thrust is to encourage the use of those systems. And I'm not gonna go into the details of them, but they're rather, you know, rather comprehensive without being, I guess, overwhelming. So, and again, very encouraging of those activities. And we also, with regard to that, we said, for example, the Town of Delaware Planning Board may, subject to limitations of this section and site plan review, appropriately modify other development standards of this law, the town subdivision law, including where not limited to building and lot coverage to accommodate renewable energy systems. And the purpose of this section being to promote rather than restrict the use of such systems. I think that kind of says it all. And that's basically it. So it's not terribly complicated. With that, I think we'll open it up to comments. Jerry and I can kind of field them. We're not here to argue or, you know, whatever. We just want to hear what you have to say. And we're gonna record that. Tess is making a list of comments. She'll be taking some notes of some of this stuff. People have signed in to speak, so why don't we call on those people and she has a sign-up list. So let's just ask them to comment and we're just gonna simply take the comments. Roy Teta?
Yeah. At the meeting of the planning board that passed the proposed new regulations onto the town board, the subject of low frequency noise was raised but put off. Low frequency noise, LFN, has been associated with at least two industrial activities that could come to our town, that's compressor stations and wind turbines. Studies indicate that individuals vary in their sensitivity to low frequency noise, but there's no question, excuse me, that there are people who have serious reactions to LFN that are detrimental to their health and cause significant stress. The World Health Organization recognizes low frequency noise as an environmental problem. But it's also the case that LFN hasn't garnered the same attention as audible noise levels and it isn't as simple a task to monitor as it is for audible sound levels. Nevertheless, any new noise regulations in our town must recognize LFN as a potential problem. The British have made progress investigating low frequency noise. And reports made for DEFRS, the British Department of Environment, Food, and Rural Affairs, is a source for looking into how to measure it and mitigate its effects. And I will email you guys some links that address that subject.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next one is Charlie Trobridge?
That's me.
And pardon me if I mispronounced his name.
No, you did it perfect. You got that absolutely right. And it's my first time coming to such a meeting and I'm just curious. I live up on Rosehill Road and we have ambient noise. Sometimes Dick is cutting his lawn, I hear his tractor, he hears my tractor. I can hear Matt Hoffers sawmill, where I bought all the wood that I built my house out of, over the hill. It doesn't really bother me all that much, so I'm just curious what motivated you guys, and you spoke to it or you attempted to speak to it a little bit in your presentation, what motivated you to zero in on that noise ordinance? And what prompted it? And, you know, what are the, what would the effects, the practical effects of that be?
Really, two things. One is to have a more rational standard rather than just a flat, you know, a standard that applies and that says so many decibels even at different frequencies, to have something that is related to the ambient noise. So, because that is the challenge. You could have a, something that's at 60, let's assume the constant frequency. If you had something at 60 decibels and you added five, and it's now 65 at the property line, that's not gonna be any more noticeable than adding five to 40. Okay? So that's kind of the point. Anything that you add to whatever level is what the issue is. So if you're adding five to a rural area which is 40, it's gonna be just as annoying to you as going from 60 to 65. So that's really kind of the major point, to have some rationality to that. But the other major point is the simplicity of it, having something that's easily understood and that people can identify with and go out in the field and measure. You can assign an engineer to go out and do this. And I would point out, this town is one of the very few towns, represented dozens and dozens of towns in Pennsylvania and New York, and rarely do these noise things get, you know, enforced in terms of practical application. You know, people look at it at the front end in terms of reviewing an application. But this town actually has practical experience in enforcing their noise ordinance. We had it with the Villaroma when they set up and we were in the midst of, you know, approving that plan. And they had an issue with the go-kart track, which we were in the process of reviewing and so on. And so we actually hired a noise engineer to go out, did the tests, gave us the information, which was not, you know, and it's not one of those things where it's clear cut. I mean, it's, the noise actually was stronger, in some cases further away than it was closer because of the, because of the lay of the land and all that kind of stuff. But the bottom line was, we used that information, I think, very effectively to get some changes to that whole program they were doing there and I think eliminated the problem. So this is one of the few towns that I know that's actually had some experience doing this. And that's kind of the idea, to be able to do that. So those are, that's it. Nothing more than that.
And we found the old ordinance very difficult to work with when we were dealing with the Villaroma. It just wasn't easy to understand and it wasn't easy to, you know, implement. So we wanted something that was more simple. I mean, if you look at the old ordinance, I don't know, you have to probably be a sound specialist to really understand it, because I don't understand it when I look at it.
Okay. Steve Lundgren? Lundgren? Yeah, Lundgren.
I've already spoken with regard to the zoning maps, but, you know, if you'll indulge me for a moment and bring up the zoning map again? Is there any --
Well, let's let everybody --
Well, this is in regard to zoning changes.
I was gonna ask for it to remain up as well, so I agree with him.
At the risk of sounding confrontational or, you know, being a conspiracy theorist or something like that, you know, one of the things that I noticed too in my brief review of the zoning changes, there's significant areas up above the town of Calicoon or the, you know, hamlet of Calicoon that, where the zoning has been changed. And, you know, among these are a large parcel that you, Jerry, happened to own that was changed from, it had a mixture of zones. Your property apparently was at one time part of the Cal B1, the Calicoon Business District, as well as the rural district. And then now in the proposed changes, that and several other properties close to you are being changed, excised from the Cal B1 district to the RU1 district. And I'm just wondering, was that simply for administrative purposes? Seems like that was a large parcel of land that is being rezoned. And, you know, I would think that you would at least disclose that fact, you know, when you're proposing these kinds of changes.
We are disclosing. Okay. Let me explain it to you. He's talking about this area right here above Calicoon. This parcel right here, one of the things we looked at was topography. The Cal B1 zone is a business zone. It's designed for businesses to expand within the river corridor. Okay? This property is not suitable for --
I agree.
Because of the topography. My property, which is this property right here, the one with the notch in, happened to wind up in three different zones. The upper corner was an R1 zone, this was in the DR zone, and this portion of it was in the RU zone. My property is also fairly steep. It's not really suitable for development.
I agree.
So we decided to put it into the RU zone. Same with the, what was my old farmhouse down here that now is belonged to by Heck. That's very steep also. Not suitable. This large piece over here is the Hinky Farm. It was also split. Now, granted, that might be suitable for commercial development, but the property owner, you know, has a choice of which side he wants to be on. Like I said, the overlay still prohibits anything that we put in the RU zone from being used, but a lot of this property, a lot of it up here is steep. There's some portions of it that might be developable, I'll give you that. But there's also a lot of it that is not developed. So that's why we did that. The other area that we took consideration of was this here. This is, for you, for those of you who know, Fralix Mountain. This is between, well, this red splotch here is where the --
I'll make it bigger for you.
Where am I?
I'm sorry. Throw you off.
Okay, down here. This red splotch is where the lumber company is, okay? And those buildings in there. This down here is behind that, down by the Calicoon Creek. It's all flood zone or side hill. Okay? This is all Billy Oak country in here. You couldn't develop it if you had to. You know, so that's why we took it out of there and put it in the RU zone. It was a better zone.
Well, I agree with you that those changes do make sense. They absolutely make sense and I concur with that. The question I have is, why weren't you forthcoming and, you know, as the chair of the planning board, when your property is being rezoned, why not come out and, you know, at least mention it before you?
This is the second public hearing we've had on this.
Yeah.
And it was certainly brought up at the first.
I don't think so.
We had the same map up here and we went through the same thing at the first one. We had a lot more people who questioned the zone at the first meeting. We had a public hearing right here in this room. It was set up the same way. The map was put on the same wall and we answered that question.
And you said, "By the way, one of the properties that's gonna be rezoned, I happened to own."
Well, you know, I live in the town, so I do own properties in town.
Yeah. Nobody questions your right to change it. It's just a question of process and procedure.
It's been discussed numerous times at the Town Planning Board meeting and -- Jerry's disclosed it numerous times. I think it's --
You know, I can't get any plainer with it, so let's move on to the --
Okay. Liam Murphy?
Hi. So I want to talk about the noise ordinance. You said the changes were to introduce simplicity and rationality. The simplicity and rationality is supposed to come from the five above ambient rule, which I'll address in a minute. But it also sets a maximum. A simpler, more, perhaps, would set no maximum at all. But since you do set a maximum, I'm wondering why you think 65 decibels in the daytime is simpler than the existing? the daytime is simpler than the existing level, which is forty-two at the same frequency level, which is one thousand hertz? Sixty-five decibels during the day is four times as loud, as I'm sure you know, as forty-two decibels. Why change the maximum so that you, it allows four times, noise four times as loud? In any event, and I should also add, why put a maximum that's higher than both PSC and FERC require when they're dealing with compressor stations? The FERC requires fifty decibels maximum, the PSC forty decibels maximum. So, I've been asking this question for quite a while now, but I'd be very curious to hear the answer. In any event, I think the issue of simplicity is based on a misunderstanding. The existing law sets different decibel levels for different frequency levels. That has to be done because human beings perceive sound differently depending on the frequency level. I assume that the new section six oh five five uses a DBA scale, but it doesn't specify which decibel scale it's going to use. So, that is something that absolutely has to be fixed in this draft because you cannot interpret a noise law if it doesn't specify which decibel scale it's been used. We can assume it's DBA because DBA is used in a different section or relates to wind turbines. What does the DBA scale do? Precisely adjusts decibel readings for frequency levels, just like the existing noise law does. It just does it for you rather than having it written down in the law. What's the difference between DBA and the existing frequency weightings? DBA weights low frequency noise very, very low, to the extent that it basically will discount it completely. So, Roy Tedoff's concerns about low frequency noise, noise are made much worse when you move from the existing law to a DBA scale. Okay. Let me address the five above ambient. I don't think this is simple either because the law has no definition of ambient, how it's to be measured, and it doesn't, and on the issue of enforceability, it doesn't provide a default ambient noise level as many, for example, the town of Windsor, which has an excellent noise ordinance, specifies a default of thirty-five decibels, and if you want to establish that the ambient is higher than that, you have to prove it. The noise maker has to provide their own sound survey. I don't know what you have in mind here, is the town going to be doing sound surveys to check ambient noise level every time there's a problem? We also need to distinguish between daytime and nighttime ambient noise level. So, I don't think the five above ambient is simple or enforceable as it's written at all. To the contrary, I think it's going to introduce something of a free-for-all, which in conjunction with raising the maximum to sixty-five, it will have obvious bad effects. I have a letter from a noise expert, from Robert Andrus from Environmental and Safety Associates, addressed to me, and which he gave me permission to read out. I've read with interest the information which you've sent me concerning the proposed revision to the town of Delaware noise ordinance. Section six oh five five of the zoning law has the following observations. It's apparent that the references to tables six oh five five one and two have been eliminated. That's the thing that you were saying, it's complicated linking decibel levels with frequency levels. This is a major step backward from what appears currently to be a rather concise standard. Two, presumably under the provisions of the revised standard, readings will be taken using the conventional A weighting, that's DBA here says, presumably because the current section as written doesn't say what scale is going to be used. This virtually eliminates the ability to measure the effects of low frequency sound, again getting back to Roy Tedoff's point. Three, noticeably missing from both the existing and proposed ordinance is a penalty for pure town sound as might emanate from a pump or compressor where one or two frequencies clearly stand out. Research has shown that pure noise tone is more disturbing, and a penalty of five to ten decibels is typically applied to such noise. The ordinance sets limits based on the ambient. The ambient is generally lower at night than during daytime hours, so twenty-four hour averaging is inappropriate. The ambient level should be defined as daytime between the hours of seven and nine and nighttime between the hours of nine and seven a.m. Our conclusion is that the existing ordinance is better than most, and the proposed changes intended to eliminate the tables will, those are the tables which link the decibel levels to frequencies, will only weaken it by allowing the introduction of virtually uncontrolled low-frequency continuous or cyclic noise. Couple of additional points. In subsection C, numerous exemptions are listed. It should be added that sound from these activities should be held to a level only as needed to perform the function. The way it is written, the noise level is unlimited. Noise is noise regardless of the source. And section six one eight six, the Wind Energy System Standard, subsection D calls out a maximum level of sixty DBA. Again, this ignores the continuous low-frequency elements of noise produced by wind power generators, and the existing table six oh five five one, that is more appropriate. So, I think in sum, the existing law is better than what's being proposed, but the existing law isn't good enough, and I would urge the planning board to take the whole issue of noise control back to the drawing board and consider drawing up a comprehensive and well-thought-out noise ordinance. And I'd appreciate answers to the questions I've been asking for a while. Thank you.
I think the one, one question you, you made a rather thorough presentation. I think one of the questions was how, why did we, how did we come up with the sixty? And why are we, why are we doing that? And you compared it to the forty-two. The forty-two is a, is an overall average from looking at various frequencies and essentially combining those and looking and, and coming up with an equivalent thing. That's not the, that's not the actual standard that's in the existing, as you said, it's different for different frequencies. And, no, I didn't interrupt you, so let me. So, what you're, what you're saying is that you're comparing apples to oranges, you're taking this forty-two and comparing it to the sixty. That's not really it. The sixty is simply the upper level for any decibels. I do think that you, you had a couple of good thoughts there that I may well recommend to the, to the town. I think when you talked about the default thing, that might be a good idea, and I like the, the definition of an ambient may be a good idea. I'm, I'm, I'm not definitively saying what that at this point, but I, I think that's rather an interesting idea. And the other thing, it's certainly the DBA thing, I, I think that, why not? You know, that makes a lot of sense. So, the, the bottom line is what I talked about, and again, we're not, you know, we'll, we'll take your comments into consideration. I, I read your letter a couple of times to look at it, and, and I think you acknowledged in your letter that it, that under certain circumstances, it conceivably could be more strict than the existing ordinance. I think you said that in the letter. And in fact, our, the town engineer said it's, and he thinks it's stricter. That doesn't say that it's perfect. I understand the point you're making, and more than willing to consider those and perhaps even recommend some of the changes that, that you, you suggested to the board. So, thank you for your comments.
May I come back for one second?
Sure.
The forty-two decibels is taken at a thousand hertz from the existing table, and the DBA scale is equivalent to the unweighted scale at a thousand hertz.
Okay.
So, at a thousand hertz, which is the middle of the human hearing range, the sixty allows noise four times as loud as existing.
No, I understand that. I understand that.
And I've just never been given any kind of answer to the question, why we would want to raise the maximum?
Well.
If it were for.
Because you're going to have some uses, that some uses that are going to be louder. I mean, we, thinking how Al Stepek brought in a noise meter here, and the activity of my voice carries, okay? So, I'm probably, I'm probably, I can see it now, I'm taking it up to the end of the chart right now, talking. So, you know, there are some activities that are going to require a larger level of noise. And if you're in an area, for example, if you're down next to Pex Market, you know, I go there frequently myself and go to Matthews on Main, you can have a fair amount of noise in that little, you know, that little area there. So, would you want to have the same standard apply there that you apply elsewhere throughout the entire town where it's, you know, very rural? You wouldn't. You'd want to be able to allow something there. So, I, I'm not ruling out your comments, I'm just simply saying those are some of the rationales for it. I think you made some good points, more than willing to consider them, and thank you. That's, that's really it.
I'd just like to add, just to give the, the audience an idea of what the sound in this room was, while, while you were speaking, you were bouncing back and forth between seventy and eighty decibels. When the chatter in the room before the meeting started was in excess of eighty decibels. And this is a, a chart of sound noise, this is from Temple University Department of Civil and Environmental Engineering. A quiet rural area, the normal decibel level is thirty decibels. A bird chirping is forty, or a library sound could be forty. A conversation at home is around fifty, sixty, and.
Depends on who's yelling at who.
But I mean, just, you need to get an idea of what, what the, the sound levels are.
That remains changing the law from forty, which has worked pretty well, to sixty. So, none of this really affects the question, why do you want to raise the maximum?
You know, I, I'm going to answer, but I, I was doing some research today, because I knew you'd be here, and I wanted to be sure and be prepared to talk about it. And the, I pulled down a publication from State of Maine, I think it's one of their planning associations or state departments, I forget the deals of planning. And, and actually, I felt pretty good when I read it, that, that what we had was reasonable. That notwithstanding the fact that, that you made some suggestions I'm more than willing to entertain personally and recommend perhaps. So, you may want to get a copy, I think Ed's got it over there, and, and maybe, maybe you're familiar with it. But take a look at it, I think it, you know, it's kind of, it reinforces some of what you're talking about, it reinforces some of what I'm talking about. So, hopefully somewhere in the middle we meet, so.
And to answer one of your other questions, what we do when we have a, we do actually test the ambient at the different times of day, and those tests are paid for by the applicant who, who applies. So, like at the Villaroma, we went, we set the, the company up there to do tests at all different times of day and night to disturb, to establish the ambient level at those times. And then we compared them to the level when the track was running and so forth. So, I mean, that, that is part of the process. Okay?
Okay. Buck?
Thank you. Buck Moorhead? I have two points to make with, with respect to the proposed ordinances or amendments. It is understood that the mapping along the River Corridor has been amended as a corrective administrative action. It is also understood and appreciated that the town has made a good faith effort to work with the UDC and National Park Service regarding these modifications. That being said, the amendments as written take a zoning ordinance that was quite clearly articulated, where a property owner or potential developer could understand quite clearly what the possibilities were for a property in the River District, and have now created large areas of RU District within the River District with ambiguous conditions. The only qualifier being that that portion of the RU District is subject to the intent of the River Management Plan's land and water use guidelines. If there's going to be only one qualifier, that is of course a good one. The single qualifier infers that all uses in RU, either principal permitted or special, will not necessarily be permitted. Also, as per amended clause six thirteen point four, it is made clear that there may be additional conditions, resetbacks, buffers, stormwater management, building heights, et cetera, all determined and imposed during the special use permit application process. However, none of the uses and development standards are established by this amendment. The current zoning has three districts that are in the River Corridor, DR, Cal B one, and Cal R one. Each of these have clear tables that identify permitted uses, special uses, and development standards. The town reviewed and responded to the land and water use guidelines of the River Management Plan and proposed zoning accordingly. This is clear, this is simple, this is comprehensible. Regrettably, as proposed, the amendments do not build on this system, and one has to wonder why not. If the only goal was to correct this administrative issue with respect to the fuzzy boundary of the designated River Corridor, then why not link the newly created RU portions directly back to the DR District itself? If that is what, they had been previously designated, or back to the Cal B one if that would, had been the prior district? Then all the permitted uses, special uses, and development standards will remain applicable, applicable and in play. If there was a desire to add a use or modify a standard in those tables, one could do that as well. Instead, in converting the portions of properties to RU, we now would have greatly expanded potential permitted uses from, from nine in the DR District to, to fifteen in RU, and special uses from seven in DR to thirty in RU. With this amendment, it will not be possible to read the zoning and have a reasonable approximation of what one can do with the portion of the property in the River District. One would have to go to the land and water use guidelines without knowing how either the town or the UDC will interpret and want to integrate the guidelines. As written, there is much ambiguity for landowners, will be much greater work for the planning board, and every project could very well be a negotiation with the UDC. Each interpretation of the planning board and the UDC Project Committee would be influenced by who happens to be participating at that moment in time, potentially, potentially leading to inconsistent incremental decisions. My second point has to do with the section twelve changes where the portions of Cal B one were changed to RU. Cal B one is focused on future commercial development in the Hamlet area and substantial conformance to the River Management Plan. RU promotes agriculture, low-density residential, and also allows natural resource processing and, and natural resource uses. This amendment substantially reduces the area that were previously intended for the expansion of the Hamlet. Can the planning board explain where that expansion may occur now if these are removed? And what the, this relationship to the Millennium Pipeline, which it happens to be where these changes occurred as well? In my initial comments to the planning board, I had recommended to these, that these regulations be structured as an overlay zone. While the word overlay is now included, it takes advantage of none of the strengths of an overlay zone where conditions are clearly attached. In this case, no conditions are attached beyond the reference to being subject to the intent of the land and water use guidelines of the River Management Plan. That remains my recommendation, that these proposed amendments be rejected and be rewritten as a true overlay zone with identified permitted uses, special uses, and development standards. I have heard that this has been three years and appreciate the effort of the planning board, but it would be a shame after that time to adopt this document that creates so much ambiguity, unless of course that's the goal.
Thank you, Buck. You know, you've been forthright about your opinions on this from the beginning, so I'm not going to argue with those, and, you know, we have a difference of opinion to some extent. But I, I just want to point out one thing, you said twice that, that what we had in here is that we would comply with the intent of the River Management Plan or the guidelines. That's, you know, it's much more than intent. It, it says, it says the planning board shall take into consideration the effect of the proposed use on the Upper Delaware Seacoal Recreation River and shall attach any and all conditions of approval necessary to provide protection to the UDSR from impacts of development. So, that's a, that's more than intent, I, I just have to respectfully offer that.
Can I say something about that?
Sure.
The, the, the strength of what exists now is that, that step, I mean, they're, they're guidelines, and towns, my understanding is that towns read these guidelines when they develop their zoning, and they develop a zoning document that respects those guidelines. That zoning document is then taken to the UDC, and the UDC says, you know, you're right, you're, you're there, like this does respect the guidelines, and that's done. Like you've got the uses, you've got the setbacks, you've got these things, it's all established, and you can go for, like we have for five or six years with that in place. This is going to be a project-by-project interpretation of what is, is, you know, fits their guidelines. So, how those, I think that that is a structural flaw in this approach.
Okay, thank you.
Let me just talk.
Okay.
If we went the other way, which you're suggesting, we had properties that were split by the DR Zone and the RU Zone. If we went the other way, which is what you're suggesting, is that we increase the, the zoning on the RU Zone, in other words, take those properties that were split, instead of putting in the RU Zone, put them in the DR Zone, thereby taking away development rights from those people. So, that's not the, that doesn't solve the problem. You're going to have the problem no matter which way you go.
I didn't, I didn't, I didn't suggest that.
Well, that's what it sounds like.
Okay, let me, let me make it clear. If, if, say my property is one being split right now, it's split between DR and RU. Right now, I have RU portion that's out of the district where I have, can do the thirty special uses. The part that's in the DR, I would be perfectly content if you said, okay, call it RU for administrative purposes, but everything that applied yesterday with respect to DR applies today.
It's not much.
No, it doesn't, it's not written that way. It's not written that way.
I really think it is, to be honest.
No, 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 you could, you could say.
This was, this was all reviewed by the UDC, they agree. Would you like to comment on that?
This, can I make, I, I note, this is what, these are the, the, the DR District says, I can only do these principal uses, these accessory, these special uses, and these are the standards, a lot of areas, it's established.
There's a list of uses in the guidelines, the guidelines have numbers, there are choices as to how to meet a particular objective, but there are, there are standards in the guidelines, I know, I wrote them.
But why, but why not just do this? I mean, you don't have to do anything.
Well, I think Jerry's explained, I think Jerry's explained that very well, because you, you end up with split properties that you.
The, the property isn't split. It's all RU, it's got an overlay of these back on it, the same thing. The property isn't split, it's all RU, it's got an overlay of these back on it, the same thing, back on it.
I just, I, you made your point, so thank you.
You made a point, we chose to go the other way.
See, and the discussion's not over, I mean, so it's, so, Zeke Boyle?
Ready.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
I'm sorry I don't know all your names, I know your faces.
That's all right. I'd like to read this first and then just address a question to you guys. This was written by Charles Morgan, who's a retired major in the US Air Force, who lives in Texas. And this relates to compressor stations and low frequency noise. We have several deaths within Free Stone County from brain aneurysms, heart attacks and internal bleeding, as well as other severe body symptoms. Excuse me, caused by low frequency noise generated by natural gas compressor stations. These gas compressor stations are an integral part of the oil and gas pipeline system. They serve to pressurize the gas to send it down the line to gas treating facilities. They generate unabated LFN in county areas that also can penetrate into cities. Noise must be properly addressed by not only decibel levels, but also by its frequency in cycles per second, CPS. Noises within the human hearing range are typically five hundred CPS to twenty thousand CPS. Low frequency noise is noise below five hundred CPS. A disease named vibrio-acoustic disease has been found and named by the Human Development Center in Lisbon, Portugal. Who found that it is caused by low frequency noise. Studies performed show that the various frequencies of LFN affect different systems within the human body. Autopsies performed on persons who have died of VAD after extended exposure to low frequency noise confirm the study findings. I am being run out of my home most days due to intolerable noise from the gas compressor station nearby. I had lived in my home in perfect health for twenty years prior to installation of the compressor station. And by the way, just a note, I'm shortening this, I sent copies of this letter to the town board, thanks to us, the full copy. As an American citizen and twenty year Air Force veteran, I should be able to live anywhere in the United States in safety. And like I mentioned, this is from Charles Morgan, a retired USAF major. And also the Executive Director of Citizens for Environmental Cleanup. And the thing I want to address, Terry and Tom, is that it's obvious that there's a lot to this noise issue. And I don't know if you guys are aware of this disease that's associated with it. But this low frequency noise is something that really travels under the radar. And they said it travels so low to the ground that it can carry for eight to nine miles, given the topography, of course. So it's something I feel that is, really needs to be addressed.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome, thank you.
Jenny Boyle?
We made notes of, I made notes of the low frequency thing, I would just say that, you know, in our, in our exploring different noise levels. And when we were considering the compressor station ordinance, which is now taken out of the ordinance. We didn't find any, anything that addressed these low frequency noises, but we'll keep that in mind when we look at it for other uses.
Yeah, because it applies to wind generators also.
That's what I understand, but also in the wind, we, we didn't find, we looked at a whole bunch of ordinances, wind ordinances. And nobody ever addressed low frequency noise in any of those ordinances, so.
Well, these things are fairly.
This might be something that's new and coming on, but there's no, even the FERC and Public Service Commission. In some of the compressor station approvals that I've looked at, don't address low frequency noise. So just to let you know that I did look at all those emails that you sent me and I did research all those sites that you sent me. And I think a lot of the other people on the board did also. So we do take what you're saying seriously, but we'll have to keep looking to see what we can find.
I have more sites than you, I'll email you.
Just email me.
Jenny Boyle?
Thank you. I have a petition that I would like to present to the town board. And it reads, "We residents, taxpayers and business owners of the town of Delaware ask our town board to delete the new noise section, six oh five five. And all the other new noise rules from the proposed amendments to the zoning law. We further ask the town to develop a comprehensive, careful and strong noise ordinance that provides enforceable legal protection against noise pollution. The petition is signed by over a hundred residents, taxpayers and business owners from the town of Delaware."
Thank you. Michael?
Yeah, actually, for the sake of brevity, I have the same concern about the noise. As, you know, I was on the planning board and was part of the zoning changes. And it's just become aware to me about the low frequency noise. And you just said that it's something that's just becoming aware, so this is a perfect opportunity to include that in. And look at and kick back the noise ordinance that was recently, you know, that is being proposed. And study it again and be on the forefront of things instead of, you know, afterwards. So I just would recommend it going back and being researched again by the town planning board, that's all, thank you.
Madam? Am I pronouncing that right?
Ma'am, Morehead.
Okay.
I'm gonna read, yeah. "It's incumbent upon the town board of Delaware to enhance amendments to the town of Delaware zoning law to provide detailed precepts, enforceable legal protection. To carefully weigh issues confronting the foreseeable future. The detailed ordinances should provide explicit direction for technical issues, as that is what is deemed necessary in the dynamic that confronts the town at this point in time. Expertise by proven experienced professionals is a necessary route to enable accurate decisions. Given that the noise section six oh five point five lacks careful decisive detail that would lend certain ambiguity, ultimately providing less protection than exists in the current zoning law. This specific noise ordinance and section should be stricken from the amendment. For example, six oh five point five dash one and dash two have been eliminated. Currently, the zoning law in Delaware are about the same standards as held by the PSC. The proposed amendments state a change to allow four times as much noise than currently allowed. The issue of low frequency noise in the proposed amendment is not even addressed. This issue has undergone much research and consequent regulation in Europe as a result of proven health hazards under the new zoning amendment readings. Under the new zoning amendment readings would be taken using conventional A-weighting DPA. This virtually eliminates the ability to measure the effects of low frequency sound. No decisive definition has been given to ambient noise, thereby rendering the term ineffective and without clarity. No determination has been assigned to it. Definition in scientific detail regarding default level and measurement rules must be made utterly clear. Clearly, with such definition disputes can be held at a probable minimum. What is the ambient noise? How measured? What's the default? How departures from default can be proven? Another troubling oversight is the absence from the existing and proposed ordinance is a penalty for pure tone sound eliminating, for example. From a pump or compressor where up to two frequencies stand out. Five to ten decibels is the limit whereby typically a penalty is applied to the most disruptive noise referred to pure tone noise. Certainly, the time already allocated to formulate the new zoning amendments should not supersede the importance and resultant gravity of the critical issues of. If the critical issues were not completed in a concise and thorough manner with forethought and focused eye on the scientific details so critical to the subject at hand. And when you were talking about the forty, increasing it from forty to sixty five decibels, you know, you may be, you were using examples such as birds tweeting or conversation in a room. But what you weren't using as an example was repetitive industrial noise. And how can that possibly be compared to birds tweeting or conversation in a room? I don't think so, that doesn't seem to hold water. What's your explanation for the increase from forty to sixty, other than using a comparison as birds tweeting? How about repetitive industrial noise? What's your explanation there?
Well, there is a provision, I think, in there that deals with the fact that it's repetitive. I answered the question on the forty to sixty, it's designed to have an upper, upper limit of sixty. But the real standard is the five decibels above the ambient noise level.
What's the ambient noise level though?
Well, well, it's the background noise level. And I think that's a, that's a term that's used in the DEC regulations on noise.
It's not defined though.
It's not, well, you know, you don't have to define everything in the ordinance. You know, is it a good idea to define it maybe? But the fact is that we're entitled to rely upon things like the DEC definition, for example. So, you know, really not much more to say on it, I think you've offered some good input, we're certainly going to consider it. And we'll see where it goes from there.
I looked up the definition of ambient in the dictionary and it says surrounding noise.
Yeah.
So I mean, it's.
It doesn't give you a lot more than.
You don't have to define every single word.
Yeah.
But there are different ways to measure ambient noise, it's not, it's a scientific issue of which I'm not capable of determining. But it's the scientific issue that has not been determined or specified in this.
That's precisely the point.
And there are many ways to determine.
Can I answer? That's precisely the point. And when we did the Villa Roma thing, and I gave that example, the fact that it was actually louder further away than it was closer, because of the lay of the land. And that's why you have to be able to adapt to the circumstances and look at the real life situation that you're dealing with on the, on the ground. If we had a standard that says we're going to take it at X number of feet within, from the property line. We might have missed what was the loudest portion of the most annoying portion of that noise. So, and as it turns out, we had enough flexibility, that's using existing law, which, you know, you can, you can use that as an argument to say it's good. But the, the point is that we were able to use that and we were able to say, well, we think we got to take this into consideration. Even though we could test it at, what, three hundred feet and it wasn't that bad, but at five hundred feet, it was really annoying. We were able to use that to go back to the owner and say, we got to do something about this. So, so it cuts both ways, you know. You can argue in favor of having a hard line standard, you can argue in favor of not having a hard line standard. So, you know, it's a difficult subject and I think you've all said that. So let us take what you've said and we'll take it into consideration, you know, we're not unmindful of what you're saying.
The other thing you should keep in mind is, these zoning laws are a living document. If something came out tomorrow, you know, we can always change this law. It's not, it's not in concrete, it can be changed anytime. We just have to go through the process again. So I mean, this is, this is not the, is not a final set of rules that we're going to live by forever. If things change, the law can be changed, so you have to keep that in mind.
Let's go, we have Tom Kepner, is that right?
I'm going to make a comment on that process. I'm profoundly disturbed at what's going on here. I'm not somebody who knows all the technical aspects of the discussion, but I do know avoidance when I see it. And that's what's going on here, I think you have a real problem of trust between the citizens and your board and the town board. I think you've heard a number of very constructive suggestions and your response has been, we'll take it into consideration. And I've been around enough government to know that that means you can do whatever the hell you want to. So if you really want to do what's good for this town, then you will put in place zoning that promotes a development that is beneficial for the town. And not one that harms and erodes what's positive for our future. We need zoning that will protect our health and well-being. That will ensure that our natural surroundings are not harmed. And that we can all enjoy clean air and safe water. And frankly, I wonder whether you people really are doing that. And whether you are taking into account what the town's comprehensive plan sets out, which I think is very good. But I don't see that being put in practice. And I would like to see you work with these folks here that have made some real positive constructions. And not as you, Mr. Euca, said, wait for the public hearing, we'll explain everything. This is avoidance, you need to sit down and work with people who have the best interest of the town at heart.
With all due respect, there's no avoidance here. And if anybody thinks I can stand up here and say that I'm going to simply accept what somebody said, I haven't had that authority. I, we don't have any choice but to say, we'll take it into consideration. So I got to tell you, I resent you saying that using that term means that we're trying to avoid it. It is our job to take into consideration what you said. It's not our job to do what you demand because you simply come to a meeting. We are going to take into consideration, I have no authority whatsoever, I'm simply an advisor. Jerry is simply an advisor in terms of the structures of these rules. So that's how we'll do it. With that, other, anybody else have any comments they want to offer for the record?
I'd like to ask, I'd just like, is anybody in the town dissatisfied with loud noises as of now?
No.
Yes.
No.
Just one?
I don't know for how many years, ten, fifteen years, twenty years. I have a new neighbor, it's a sawmill, I'm directly, how shall I call it, into the sound direction. The whole experience, my living there has changed. It was a paradise there before, and now there is this constant, constant noise. I have put my property up for sale and the visitors make an issue over it. And they do not want to live to such a noise. It is terrible and I don't wish this to happen to any of you. Up until nine o'clock many days, this sawmill is operating. And as you know, there exists noise inhibiting stuff. So what do you suggest I should do? Because it's really a terrible situation.
Well.
And I own this property for forty-four years now.
I would suggest if that's the way you feel, you write a letter on it and somebody will check it out, that's what, what needs to happen. If you're alleging that there's a violation of town standards, then put it in writing and somebody will investigate it.
The frontage of this sawmill is being used as his backyard. Back and forth, at times it's not possible, a two-way road turns into a one-way road. After a heavy rainfall, it's covered with mud. I've spoken to the town, what do you call it, the highway superintendent. He tells me that he doesn't want to come between me, Hofer and the town.
Well, I think, if you, if you, if you have a complaint, you should make the complaint, that's the bottom line, and then the complaint can be investigated.
My past experience as a town has been, it goes nowhere.
Well.
Unless you spend, I don't know how much money, to go to the Court of Appeals.
Well.
And this reflects exactly the lack of trust that exists on this town.
Well, I've given you the answer, you need to file a written complaint and then it'll be taken from there, so. Is there any other comments? Yes.
A question, actually. You talked about it being a living document, the zoning laws, I understand that and agree. What happens if we don't have, for example, the best noise ordinance we can? You know, and now that we've, you know, pointed out some, some possible weaknesses and what's been come up with. And a company comes in, like Wind Turbine or something like that. Do they, can you then change the law based on a new company trying to come in? Or are they automatically grandfathered to the existing law? Now, how does that work? If you're going to react, wait to react to a possible problem, is it going to tie our hands any as a planning board or zoning board?
I would defer to council on that. I would defer to council on that.
You probably, I mean, the answer, the answer is like every legal question. It depends. But the, 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 the nature of this, I mean, the activity that you're describing sounds like something that would be, uh, subject to some significant review and approval process, probably before the planning board is a special use. And remember, those standards that are set up in these laws, in our, in our zoning law, our subdivision area, these are all minimum standards. If you look at, 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 for example, the standards that, that generally apply across the board in terms of how the planning board reviews and acts upon special uses. While they apply those minimum standards, they have the ability to impose such additional, uh, conditions. They can approve, they can approve. They can approve a condition or they can deny. And public health, safety, and welfare is one of the standards that they get to take into consideration and act on. So, a lot of these things, the, the, the planning board already has the authority to dress with, address on a case-by-case basis. As long as they do it with a rational basis. They can't do it because, you know, somebody's, you know, cries chicken. There has to be some empirical evidence that there's, that there's a real issue. And if there is, they've got the, they've got the ability to address it and the authority to address it.
I'm just thinking like when something comes to me at the zoning board of appeals. You know, I, we have the, we go through the book, thick book, and you know, we look up everything that, that is listed there. So, I is, you know, if, if it's not covered there, uh, you know, I'm gonna be.
The zoning board of appeals has a different task than the planning board. The planning board has discretionary review powers. The zoning board of appeals has some discretion, obviously, to judge, to make a judgment as to whether or not there's a, a hardship and things like that. But it's not, they don't get to, to add to the standard or, you know, that kind of thing.
And you would be able to add to the standard of a new kind of.
Based on the circumstances of the application. And let's, let's use your example of the wind. I'm very familiar with the wind farm over in Waymark. Probably everybody's.
I mention them because of the low frequency.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And there's a, the, o- over in, uh, Waymark, uh, everybody's seen them, the, the towers on the hill there. Um, and you can, you know, there were some noise complaints about those when they were built. Uh, I went up and down, actually Alan Sorenson and I did it together. We went up and down the, the valley. Uh, kinda checking it out and, and, uh, for some research we were doing for Delaware County, New York, and we use this as an example. And, uh, we only found one spot where you could really, you know, hear them with any consistency. You know, up close, you didn't hear much at all, to be honest with you. But again, at the bottom of this one hill, which was kind of in a trough of a valley. You know, that there was, I, I don't, I would guess it's probably qualified as what you're talking about as the low-frequency noise. You could hear it and it was kinda constant. It wasn't loud, but it was constant. And it was annoying, and yet that was where the, probably the most expensive house in the valley was built too. But that's neither here nor there. The point is that the circumstances, again, of the lay of the land, uh, are such that, that, uh, I think you probably, somebody who's looking at that whole noise issue probably could've predicted that at the front end, you know. And, uh, that's my guess. Could've predicted that at the front end. And you could've applied, just like Ken is saying, a standard in the review, uh, to maybe have them set back a little further in that case or something of that nature. Because it had to do, they were right on the, the edge of the ridge there, right on top, and houses right down here. It's probably a quarter mile in between, but the circumstances were just right in that case that it was louder.
I, I appreciate the explanation, except just don't confuse the low-frequency noise, which I don't think that's an example.
Okay, fair enough, fair enough.
I just thought I'd make that point.
You're probably right.
No worries.
Okay.
I, so, I guess my question is, I, people have been asking it all night, is where I live, um, up on Miller Road. And we sold a property, we had owned, and, uh, piece of land across from the house, and we sold a piece of property behind it to someone not knowing what it'd be used for, and it ended up being quarried. And it was a huge, like, nuisance. They quarry into the night, and it was awful, and they still go back there a lot. And I was considering filing a complaint. But how are you going to measure that? Like, if I decided to file a complaint about this noise, how are you going to define the ambient term? Are you gonna, are you going to come in and, and measure it now?
Exactly. That's exactly what I said.
But you don't have a standard.
We would measure.
You define a case-by-case.
We would measure it at all different times to determine the ambient. And then we would measure it when the process is going on. That's what we do.
You, you, you'd measure it at, you would measure it at, uh, all the different property lines, for example, and probably beyond those property lines. Uh, and again, to use that Villa Roma example, in that particular case, we should've measured out at least a thousand feet, probably more like a quarter mile, you know, so. Um, and, and, and again, I think that had required some engineering judgment as to how far you do go. If it, if you're doing it in, in, in downtown Calicoon, you don't really need to go very far to figure out, you know, that the ambient there is gonna be a pretty small area. But if you're up there at the Villa Roma, it's gonna be most of that valley, you know.
Noise is a very difficult thing to, to regulate. I mean, you could have something going on in downtown Calicoon, and, and at the property lines, it would be fine. And you could get up on the hill, and it would not be fine. Half a mile away, and I can give you a, a clear example of that. I live up on the hill. When the Calicoon Creek Park has their band going down there, it sounds like it's right outside my window at night. You know, because it acts like an amphitheater. It just brings the noise up. Uh, so, I'm not complaining, by the way. Don't take that wrong.
We'll take it into consideration.
You're gonna have to pay your ten dollars. In the example that this woman gave on Miller Road, uh, now that it's already is an established business, if she complained to the town, who would pay for measuring the ambient noise? Would she, the town, or the business she's complaining against? She would.
I would, why would?
If the, if the person putting in the, the quarry was applying for a special use permit, it would, the burden would fall on the applicant.
Okay, so, in it, say there was a different case and low-frequency was an issue. Is that a sep-, do you know if that's a separate test, and I would have to have someone come in and do a separate low-frequency test?
I think you could use the same equipment to do it. Would require monitoring a different, you know, several different things.
You don't.
What's that?
You don't.
You couldn't use the GBA measure 'cause it doesn't. Oh, it doesn't go down that far, you said. That's right, that's right.
So, I'd have to pay for separate testing and.
Borrow L's. Pre-judge it.
The other thing you need to take into consideration. When, when you buy a piece of property, it's in a zone, and you really need to look at what is permitted to happen in that zone.
Right.
If somebody comes into that zone, even if it's your neighbor, and does something that's permitted in that zone that you don't like. You know, it was there, you knew, you should've known about it when you bought it, you know.
No, I lived, I lived up through, I lived through a massive dairy farm for most of my life, and it never bothered me. But this, it's awful quarreling into the, like, they shut off the, the milk machines at sunset. This goes into the night and, you know, it's, it's unpleasant. And I don't know how to, you know, I'm not gonna pay to have someone come test it. I can't.
Well, the first thing I would do is look at what the permit conditions are. There may be some permit conditions that are being violated, so. That, that's the first thing I would do, which won't really.
Is there a permit for it, you know?
Yeah, right.
How long, how long's it been havin- happening there? That, he may not even be permitted, you know?
Yeah.
Uh, so, you need to look into that.
There should be a, uh, should be a DEC permit, and that should have some conditions attached to it. That's the first thing I would do, is to look at that and see what it says.
Pam.
Thank you. Um, well, I wasn't gonna say anything, but I, I feel like I must. The board was complimented, uh, in my husband's letter that recently came out about listening. So, I hope you heard that, that there was a positive statement. And it's not us against you or you against us. We're really all trying to, uh, I, I trust that you're trying to, um, work in, in the benefit of the town, all of you. And so are we, um, here as members of the town. So, I would like to know what form, specifically what form, will your consideration take of everything that's been brought up here tonight? What, what can we expect coming back from you?
Well, what will happen is the, uh, town board, this is a town board, uh, hearing. And so it's, uh, the town board will take a look at the comments. And they'll decide whether or not they wanna send it back to the planning board for some further comment, or whether they wanna discuss it among themselves and take action at their level. So, that'll be their call. Uh, they, they can send it back to the planning board. They can modify it themselves, uh, but they, they'll have the benefit of what occurred here this evening. And, and, uh, it'll be up to them to take all that into consideration. I will probably, just speaking personally, I'll probably give some recommendations to the town, which for either body to consider. Based on some of the things I've heard, but, but they'll just simply be recommendations. That's it.
Any other comments?
Debbie. Wow. I'm Debbie Manzalillo Hornisek. I'm over a fifty-year resident in the town of Delaware. Um, just to not repeat what a whole lot of people have already said. You stood up. I agree with you a hundred percent. I back you. Uh, you, I forget, I'm sorry, I don't remember anybody's first name. I'm with you on the noise thing. Second, everything you said, a hundred percent. Uh, Liam, somebody's over there in the back. Okay, so, I, I, I'm just all with these people. Um, eh, you know, I said this the last time I stood up. Everybody here has a choice to live here. We chose this quiet rural lifestyle for a reason. If we wanted to be on Route two eleven next to the mall, we'd be there with the hundred thousand people that already do choose to live there. I mean, this is definitely a choice, um, of where to live and how to work. I grew up on a dairy farm right next door to Jerry Eufer, a hundred acres. When Dave Peters runs his tractor out there, or Robert Glazel, or any of my neighbors, we still commend them. There's two hours of plow in the field, or four hours of plant in the corn. It's all over. Um, so, one is the choice. I'm totally against raising any noise limit whatsoever. And wonder that, um, if you, uh, have made any provisions on how to contain some of the noise. Like, if you're going to allow decibels, or whatever you wanna call the loud noise, to be louder. Um, you know, containment walls, areas, uh, that reduce the noise to the closest proximity, uh, neighbors. Also, hours of operation are, should be totally in consideration. If this is the kind of noise, sixty-five decibels, that are gonna be allowed to be run twenty-four hours a day. Um, you said a conversation with two people ranges at about seventy. And we know from these meetings that, um, no one at the board will try to talk over somebody else's two-person conversation. So, who would wanna live trying to talk over the simple noise of two other people talking all the time? Um, I think these are huge considerations. Um, so, hours of operations, noise barriers, not raising the limit whatsoever from what it already is are totally concerns of mine. Um, my first question before anybody spoke was gonna be on about page one of what Tom had read. And it did have to pertain with sawmill use. And I did wanna go over it, and then it came up in the conversation. Um, I'm Regina's next-door neighbor. The sawmill wasn't there when I bought or built either. I'm not here to complain about the sawmill, but I heard something mentioned in the, uh, new statements, particularly on page one in reference, and I wondered, um, if you were going to allow them now in other areas and, um.
We, we took the sawmills out of the Calbe One District and the DR District. They were allowed previously in the DR District, and they were allowed in the Calbe One District. They are now only allowed in the RU District.
Uh-huh, okay, and.
Which is your, where you live.
Yeah, uh, so, I'll take up the sawmill with my other neighbors at another time. That's really wa- uh, not why I'm here tonight. Um, I also wanna go back to the map, um, having grown up directly adjacent, my mom is Jerry's next-door neighbor. Um, and with the hinky farm and whatnot. Um, they were using, I hate to call it an excuse, but, um, oh, it's steep, it's, uh, not developable anyway. Well, that's just a natural barrier. Why change it to be convenient for you, uh, just because you can't really build anyway? I mean, um.
It was changed because it was split.
I understand the split, but I don't understand why it would leave the rural and go into Calicoon Business One, or, you know.
It came out of Business One and went into rural.
Okay. Um, well, I realize it was split, but, you know. Uh, and the pink lines also indicate that they are in the DR, subject to their.
That is correct.
Right. Um, so, anyway, natural barriers, like you said, like hills and stuff are good for people. And, um, I think that the direct neighbors, again, and the people who are gonna hear the most noise. Um, don't wanna know about the aggravation after the fact. And I, I think that's where we're heading, and, um, I don't like it.
Any other comments? Other comments? Somebody hasn't spoken? Anybody that hasn't spoken? Yes, Warren.
Warren.
Yeah, I'm a member of the planning board, and I've been on the planning board for over six years. And I just wanna state that I find some of the comments that were made to be, uh, accusa- unnecessarily accusatory, and I find them very troublesome. On the other hand, there've been a lot of, a lot of excellent input here tonight. And I would request of the town board that it's an imperative that you kick it back to the planning board. 'Cause I think there are things that really do need to be addressed. Very, very quick. On the noise thing, the, I think that the point has been made twice. The, uh, hours of operation, I remember the first time I looked at this and saw the seven AM to nine PM. And I thought it was being increased to that, and then I realized that the existings, that's the existing noise ordinance. I find that astounding, that's, a, a day-to-day business can make, like, loud noise. Or even if it's within the ordinance, but they, like, this quarry situation till, I mean, dinnertime is plen- should be plenty. I mean, I wanna stop somebody from making a living. And some businesses, I understood even when I spoke to Ed about it, it was like well-drillers. When they start, they gotta do the whole thing there. I could see exceptions, but to have, like, I think that difference of a couple hours is huge to people's quality of life when they're living adjacent to a business.
I live it every day, and I agree with you.
Let's take a couple more comments, then we'll wrap up, yes.
I'm grateful that, uh, you'll be taking some of these comments into account. I just wanna underline what Buck said in his first contribution. I haven't heard an explanation for why you said you've been disagreeing for years about this. But he, uh, I think he asked why not do it the way he suggested, make it a genuine overlay zone with the rules actually spelled out. Uh, as opposed to what you have done, it said comply with the spirit of the river management plan. I don't know what, I don't, I, I yet have.
You have the same problems either way you go.
Well, then why not do it the other way?
Why not do it?
It, it's, it's up to the. The way it is now, it's, it's up to the interpretation of the planning board to decide whether it's in or out. But we don't have the, the situation where we don't know where a zoning line stops and starts. That we solve by doing this. Okay, you, you have a point. I don't argue that you have a point. But you would have the same problem if you did it the other way, just reversed.
Yeah, but you'd have one big advantage, which is that you'd already written your rules, and you wouldn't have to consider it case-by-case. I think that's the thrust of Buck's point.
I disagree. We would've had the same situation. We had, we would've had to consider it case-by-case.
Case-by-case for whether it's within the corridor, but not what the rules are if you've decided it is in the corridor. That's Buck's point.
Rules should be defined.
In advance.
All right.
Everything should be black and white, but unfortunately it is.
But it can be in this situation. But it can be in this situation. There's no reason to take it back.
I would just, okay, yeah, Travis.
Yeah, I'm Travis Sodell. I'm with Upper Delaware Council. And one thing we, I think we can all agree on is that this room could use some air circulation. The guidelines that are referred to in the zoning document and the, that are the basis of the river management plan. And this is straight out of the river management plan, are, are based on management principles and objectives set forth in the U.S. Wild and Scenic Rivers Act. Alternatives are generally provided for meeting those objectives, so each community and level of government can respond in a way particularly suited to their needs while preserving and enhancing the characteristics that caused Upper Delaware to be included in the National Wild and Scenic River System. With that being said, I think that it is a case-by-case basis, and I wrote that in my letter that you received today. Um, discretionary decisions will, may have to be made by the town planning board. As to whether proposed project will conform to the guidelines. And the multitude of potential effects on the community, developer, and river resources. That's, um, that's your job. So, it's in, in your hands, and the guidelines are just that. The guidelines are flexible. And we've been hands of the planning board. So, one thing that our, our one recommendation was to include the river corridor overlay district in Article Three, Section three oh one as an establishment district. Um, just to make it a little more clear, so that it is an established district. I didn't put that line on the map, though United States Congress did, so. I thi- I think they can, uh, come up with a map and, and if need be, uh, survey the whole thing, if it comes down to that.
HBS has been talking about for years, uh, getting the line surveyed and, and established, but unfortunately, they don't have the funds to do it.
I think sure project will rise, it will, uh, it may rise to that level, that it has to be surveyed. And if that happens, that happens.
Well, I, I don't think we've had any conflicts that, uh. First of all, any special use that comes up has to go through the UDC. First of all, any special use that comes up has to go through the UDC for approval anyway.
Yeah, we offer our technical assistance.
Right.
Um, guidance on all individual projects.
So, it's not only the planning board that's looking at this, it's the UDC that also looks at it.
That's why the UDC is generally satisfied with this, but I think what I hear from the residents is that they would like it, a schedule of uses and all that spelled out in your ordinance. I understand that it refers back to the River Management Plan, and we have our own schedule for the guidelines. And, so, we're satisfied with that. I'm, I can just hear what the residents are saying, so.
So, you're suggesting that we make a separate zone for the, the, uh.
I'm not suggesting that, I'm s- I'm suggesting that we include it in this, as an established district, so that it is clear what it is, rather than just referred to throughout the document.
Okay.
In Article Three.
I think with that, I think we'll call the hearing to a close unless somebody.
I'd just like to comment one more thing. Uh, the comment you made about not being, allowing speaking, uh, you need to, you need to address your questions at the town board meeting, I don't feel that's the appropriate forum for me to address questions. If you come to my planning board meeting, I have always allowed public comment, and all of it, I've never cut it off. So, uh, don't tell me that I don't listen to what you have to say, I've always allowed it. I've allowed people to, to talk for a long time, and, uh, I, I resent that accusation that I, I'm not, uh, willing to listen to you. I am very willing to listen to you.
That's what I'm trying to say. Let's see if we can work together, rather than talk at cost purposes. You've heard the suggestions, the town board is aware of it. Sit down, Mr. Liam, sit down with people who've made the suggestion, work it out, that's all I'm saying. Instead of using this technical stuff and, you know, let's, let's, you know, person to person, let's work it out.
Okay, I think that's it.
Thank you, I think we'll conclude the meeting.
Wes Ed has anything else for, okay.
Can I just say something?
Carol wants to say something.
Hold on, excuse me, one more, one more.
Um, I agree with Warren, I think that we should, if the board could send it back to us, I would like to look at some of the recommendations, particularly the noise recommendations. So, if we could have that opportunity, I'd appreciate it.
Okay.